Thank you for coming, please stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America, a free and representative republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Laws of 1975, this meeting has been duly advertised as part of our press issue of August 1st, 2015. All municipal clerks in the townships and the boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified and requirements of posting of notices have been made. Okay, minutes approval? Motion for the minutes?
Motion.
Second, please.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Boyce. No discussion, no discussion.
Mr. Bruno?
Present. Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Kauzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Moes?
Yes.
Okay, communications are on file in the board secretary's office. Reports, superintendents' report.
All right, have a number of items this evening. First and foremost, we are adopting our tentative budget tonight, and all that is really is allowing us to submit the budget for technical review to the county office. It's something that obviously occurs on an annual basis. The formal public hearing with the final budget will be on April 22nd, so that will be when that budget presentation is. As folks know, from year to year, in our eight municipalities, depending on the ratables, depending on enrollment in the elementary and in the high school districts, some of the tax rates go up, some of the tax rates go down. Historically, this year, four of the communities are up and four of the communities are down. I believe it was the same last year, although different communities go up and down, depending on their own individual changes from year to year. Mr. Boyce will present the formal budget on April 25th. Everything is within the 2 percent cap on the tax levy, so there aren't any waivers or anything of that nature. There's no bank cap that's being utilized or available at this point in time, so that will all be within the 2 percent tax on, property tax on the levy. A few other items. So, the Freehold Regional High School District was selected to participate in field testing for park assessments this year, and the park assessments have been legislated as the standardized assessments for grades three through 11 in the state of New Jersey. For us at the high school level, what that looks like is annual standardized testing at ninth, 10th, and 11th grade levels for core courses such as English IX, Algebra I, geometry, and English and mathematics in particular. And last year was the first go-round of park testing for districts across New Jersey, and at that time, we took the stance, or I took the stance, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I took the stance that as a district, let's look and see what the data looks like, let's see what this diagnostic test tells us, if it is indeed a diagnostic test, and let's see what we learn from it. And there were a number of items that we pointed out that we had concerns with at the time, the extensive nature of the testing, how often that, how long it took, the duration of the testing window itself, the difficulties at the high school level that when you have mixed grade classes, which we do for most of those classes, so you might have an Algebra II class, for instance, that's being tested, but that Algebra II class may contain ninth graders, 10th graders, 11th graders, 12th graders, and so it's not clean like a K8 where you can just test by grade level and make that happen. So, we were upgrading our infrastructure regardless, and the state reduced the testing window for year two this year somewhat, and the results have been slow to come in. So, we first got, we first received student reports, pretty generic. As a parent, I received my children's score reports. It didn't illuminate anything tremendous to me, other than how my daughter had done compared to her peers, but didn't really identify deficiencies in any way that really stood out to me as a parent, bless you, different from previous standardized assessments. And so now, last week, we did receive more sophisticated data that gives us school and district-level data that is in comparison to other schools, other districts across the state, and that's somewhat informative. And then, we've been promised individual student-level data, because until we get individual student-level data, it's really not, it's really not something that we can do a whole lot with, until we can really see on a student-by-student basis what they did well in, what they didn't do so well in, and so on. And so, we asked for the testing time to be reduced. We thought that the test itself was a bit cumbersome in terms of length, and the state obliged to a minimal degree. The test came down a little bit in duration this year. But then, we were selected to be a field test site, and as part of that field test, and I haven't quite pinned it down, because folks have given me different ranges on this, but anywhere between 75 and 110 minutes of this year's language arts assessment is a field test. And I think that, you know, in any standardized assessment, it's important to have field test questions embedded throughout the course of the test, so that you learn and understand what are good questions, what are poor questions, what are kids struggle with, is there something that's really a trick question, is it something that, you know, is content-based, however you need to make that determination, there's a role for that. I think the board is in agreement that an entire field test section is excessive. And as a parent, you know, I can't really say that I would support my child taking a field test, so I think that that's a major concern this year with the park assessment. We brought this up to the Department of Education, met with them, met with some officials there a couple times to point out that, you know, we understood the need for field test questions that might be embedded throughout the assessment, but not for a separate section. And one of the rationale that we were given was that one of those sections is a reading-composition section, and so the time needed to do that, you needed an additional section for that. You know, as far as we're concerned, as long as the test is still in sort of the formative stages, we're only in year two, we haven't even validated the test yet, the whole assessment is a bit of a field test. So, to add an additional section is obviously highly problematic. We received notice after we had already designed our schedule in the district, so now we've got to go back to the drawing board in all six high schools and redesign our testing schedules, and it adds time to that, which takes away from instructional time. And, you know, I wrote about standardized assessments in my latest blog, and I hope folks read it. There's a place in public schools for standardized assessments. Standardized assessments definitely play a role in our schools. They hope, if they're done well, they guide, they inform, they provide you a diagnostic, they allow you to know student deficiencies, programmatic strengths and weaknesses, but that's just a place. And when we reach that tipping point where standardized assessments are taking away from the instructional program, that's a problem. And, you know, with the current assessments, you know, the typical ninth grader who walks into a Freehold Regional High School District building in this day and age will take somewhere around 30 hours of a standardized assessment. I can build a house in 30 hours. So, you know, that might be a slight exaggeration, I can't really nail a picture in, but you get the idea. And there's a question of what does that time look like in relation to the rest of our instructional program? And, you know, we're charged with certainly carrying out the state requirements and the federal requirements for testing, and we're on a corrective action plan, because in none of our six high schools have we reached the 95 percent participation rate that the state requires. We certainly won't hit that, I don't believe, in most, if not all, of our high schools this year, again, either. It's not for lack of providing information about the assessment. We've held parent nights, we've talked to individuals, students who refuse, you know, we reach out to those parents, especially students who may not have met their graduation requirements yet. But we're in a very difficult spot over the next several years, where you have a multitude of assessments that you're allowed to take for graduation purposes. And then, there's the fundamental question of whether or not we believe that students need to be tested every year in high school, ninth through 11th grade. So, you have, we moved off of the HESA, which was the previous assessment, which was a one-shot deal in the junior year, and we've more than tripled the time allotted to testing. And so, at some point, you know, we need to take, I hope that folks are listening, that we need to draw down those assessments as much as possible. I'm not saying eliminate them at all, they play a role, but I'm saying shorten them, I'm saying, take a look at what we might be able to do across multiple years, rather than on an annual basis, because we can still work with that data just fine. And I hope that folks are listening. In the interim, across the state, somewhere around 25 to 28 percent of the high schoolers in the state of New Jersey refuse the assessment. So, you sort of have this mammoth civil disobedience, right, for a particular cause? And I can't, you know, parents make their individual decisions, and we respect them regardless here. So, as we move forward, I can only hope that they're listening to the folks who are actually working in schools and grappling with this, and really trying to inform our program with quality data that I think we can do in a shortened window. So, that's my soliloquy on Park. On a...
Could I just...
Sure.
Just what are the consequences to the district if we don't make good on the corrective action plan, or we don't have the participation rate?
It's a great question. I don't really know. You know, there is, you know, there's a potential for a loss of funding, that's what folks will tell you, that it's a federal mandated program, if you don't have your participation rate, you have to develop a corrective action plan that shows what you're doing. So, we've done all that. I mean, you know, we have our parent nights, we have our information, we make our individual phone calls, and parents are still going to make their choices, right, and we're still going to respect those choices. So, unless something changes in terms of what's required of what those assessments are or are not required for graduation. So, we haven't really gotten a real straight answer on what those potential ramifications are, other than the potential loss of state aid. Am I missing anything, Jeff? Did you hear anything that's...
No, I think essentially we need to focus on the state aid, but, you know, absolutely wish you're sure, at least in the sense that, based on parent decision-making, as an issue for the day.
Right. So, we filled out our corrective action plans, we've submitted them, and we'll go through it again, and we'll do what we do, and, you know, and we'll honor those parent decisions and continue to move forward. What we're trying not to do, as much as possible, is really disrupt our instructional day. And here, in our district, you know, we went back and forth about, well, do we run half-days and just test and get it done more quickly? But then, in most of our high schools, we would have to run six or seven half-days to run the gamut of the testing. And so, do we want to run six or seven half-days and not have any teaching and learning occurring in the buildings? And, you know, my answer is no, I don't want to do that. By the same token, when we try to minimize the impact to our instructional program, some kids are getting pulled out of different classes, and it becomes difficult, because a teacher may have five kids missing on a Monday, six kids missing on a Tuesday, five more on a Wednesday, and then they're trying to move the class forward, keep those students caught up, and it becomes very difficult. So, you know, we're trying to manage it on the ground at the district level in a way where it minimizes the disruption to the teaching and learning in our six buildings, which is, you know, I think most important. We still haven't received the specific data that has been promised, so we're a year out from the administration. That's a problem. We're promised that once we do receive that data, then we're promised that the subsequent turnarounds on administrations of those assessments will be much more timely, once they get through that first batch. And I'm sure there's issues with norming the test and what that looks like, and how often that takes, and then there's issues around the timing of the test, and some of the data that I've asked for is, I want to see if there's any difference when students take it on a desktop, Chromebook, an iPad, pen and paper, what do those differences look like? Because that, you know, in our district, we have, in some of our high schools, we took the assessments all on a desktop, and the thinking was, that's a 21-inch screen, a desktop is what every student is most familiar with. More students may not quite be as familiar with a 10-inch Chromebook screen or an iPad screen, and in some of our buildings, we do have, in some cases, hundreds of Chromebooks that we could have used that we did not. We're still grappling with that this year, whether we're going to use those or not, you know, because the thought was, you want to err on the side of the students performing to the best of their capabilities who sit for the assessment, but absent that data, we don't know. So, I, you know, requested that. We've requested data on time on task to see whether the answers are indeed valid, you know? So, a student goes into a multi-process word problem and spends five seconds on it, that tells me that that student didn't really attempt that question. And so, taking a look at what that might mean, you know, we've asked for data like that. I'm sure that the folks at Park are looking at that, we'll see where it all heads. In the interim, we administer those assessments, we're planning, our schedules are done, for the most part, in our six buildings, and we're gearing up for that, anticipating some of the testing issues that we had last year. You know, oftentimes, a number of folks refused last second, so that causes some difficulties too, if there's larger waves of those folks, you know, just in terms of managing the school day. So, it's not an easy process. You know, I think we could, I think as we move through over time, I'm hoping that we get a lot better. And by "we," I don't mean us. Any other questions on that? All right. Just want to publicly acknowledge Mr. Sean Boyce for winning the Distinguished Service Award from New Jersey ASBO. Sounds good, right? So, when Sean was in the running for the award, you know, we had a conversation about it, and he said, "Ah, you know, it's not really a big deal." And then, he won it, and he texted me, he said, "You know what, it's a big deal." But it's a, it's a, it's a great award, because what it recognizes, and so there are six winners across the state of New Jersey who are business administrators, and it's sponsored by the New Jersey Association of School Business Officials, New Jersey ASBO. And what that, what it really is, it's the application process and recommending somebody for it, nominating somebody for it, is really about their contributions to the school district beyond their regular job scope, you know, so things above and beyond what the job description says. So, you know, we nominated Mr. Boyce, Mr. Boyce was nominated.
Mr. Boyce's agent...
Take that up with the county. So, now Sean is one of six across the state, and those six will compete for New Jersey Business, School Business Assistant, School Business Administrator of the Year for the state of New Jersey. So, we're lining some pockets as we speak, no, I'm joking. But, so, Mr. Boyce is in the running for that, and it's definitely more than just a feather in the cap, and it's a representation of, I think, the quality work that we do across the district. On another highlight, Dr. Hazel, Dr. Moore, and I were able to present this year at the AASA National Convention on Strategic Planning for Equity and Excellence. It was a session that was very well-received, we, you know, we were up against one of the main keynote speakers, so we were, you know, we were a little nervous about what sort of crowd we might draw, how large the crowd would be, and we ultimately had a couple hundred people in our session, and I will dare say, it was the most attended morning session. And it went very well, and, you know, in the subsequent couple of weeks, we've had a number of superintendents and other school officials from across the country really reach out to us about some of the things we're doing in the district and how we're planning, and, you know, real nice feedback in just, you know, being open and honest about stealing some of our ideas, which, you know, is a good thing. Spring musicals are, in some buildings complete, in others, we still have a week or two left of, I think, the Township Musical is yet to go off. I think everyone else may have gone. Marlborough, what are you, now? Okay, yeah, so there's a couple that are still out there. They're always great shows if you can get to them. Our Teen Driver Program is underway across the buildings, across the district, real powerful speakers. I was at Coltsneck the other day, and they had a mom who spoke about losing a daughter. Just powerful messages, I think, to our young drivers who are soon-to-be drivers, getting their license for the most part, new drivers, and then, of course, we run the accompanying parent program across the district, where parents have to come in order for a student to be eligible for a parking spot, and it's just, you know, there's never too many reminders about making good decisions behind the wheel, especially when you have, you know, in our case, we have somewhere around 3,000 teenage drivers in this district, and the dangers of distracted driving, it's not just about poor decisions, you know, maybe when I was a kid, it was all about, you know, don't get behind the wheel with somebody who's been drinking, or if you've been drinking. Now, it's really about be careful with your distractions, and what that looks like as well, and so there's a whole host of other concerns that we need to take very seriously. And it's a wonderful program. Just a brief note, we had a terrific inter-district state championship game between Coltsneck High School and Freehold Township High School in boys' basketball last week. Packed house, Coltsneck High School won literally on a buzzer beater as time expired. I believe Mr. Donahue was knocked down by the crowd, but has since recovered from his injuries. But it was a great night for the district. And then, last Thursday, we hosted a college post-secondary planning presentation where we had college reps from Rowan, George Washington, University of Delaware, Penn State, and Monmouth, right? And it was interesting, one of my main takeaways, so we had sort of the frequently asked questions that all parents have for some of these folks, so one of them said, "What about class rank?" Right? Because it's always sort of this pressure cooker here in some of our buildings, and to a person, all five reps said, basically, "What about it?" Most of the schools that report to us don't even have class rank anymore, it's not a big deal, basically. And so, I think that we've tried to stress that here when we moved to a decile ranking several years ago, that colleges aren't all that interested in the class rank any longer. And so, all five of those reps validated that, and I thought that was good to hear. We had about 400 parents in attendance. And then, finally, last week, we also, Dr. Hazel and I met with our executive student cabinet students and went through some of the feedback that we've got from student-focus groups about scheduling, the scheduling process. So, Dr. Hazel and Mrs. Howe went out to each of the six high schools and met with different student-focus groups about what sorts of things they'd like to see in the schedule, what sorts of teaching really resonated with them, what they would expect. So, we're collecting all of that feedback, and our student executive cabinet members ran point on those focus groups across the district. So, we just debriefed with those folks on Thursday afternoon. And that concludes my report. Mr. Moes?
Hi. We have a couple of committee reports, one is curriculum and instruction.
I guess that's me. Okay. Is this thing on? Yes. Okay, so we had a meeting on March 7th of the Curriculum Committee, and we talked about the admissions process for the Learning Center and Academies. The first round of notifications had gone out maybe 10 days ago. We also talked about the resolutions that are on this agenda for hiring staff for summer academy. We got an update on curriculum writing, and we got an update on work to expand computer science. As a matter of fact, on the agenda tonight, there's going to be something that we need to approve. There's this new AP class, Computer Sciences Principles, and it's really to teach students on the design process. There's not even a textbook available at this point, but what happened was, the University of Texas got a grant to create a curriculum for this course, so they're actually going to come out over the summer and do an intensive workshop for our staff. So, we talked about that. And then, finally, just with respect to writing curriculum, there was a new template, so we went over procedures for implementation of tying standards into curriculum writing. And then, with respect to the Finance Committee, the next night, me and Amy were back here for a Finance Committee meeting, and basically, what we did is, we reviewed the status of various projects in the district, as we've talked about before, roof work, really is taking place on all six schools over the past couple of years, the last two summers, basically, and the majority of the work is done on all these projects. In general, the roofs are in good shape, and financially, everything fell into place with respect to what was budgeted for these projects. Then, we talked about the ESIP Plan, as has been discussed previously, because the work at Freehold Borough was very extensive, it had to be done in two phases, and with respect to, well, the one thing we talked about with respect to what's going on now is, and Sean and Pat went into detail on this, was the air exchange component wasn't working properly, so there was some issue with people being a little bit too cold, and it really just had to do with not enough hot water getting pumped throughout the building. So, the contractor needs to bring in an engineer, so adjustments can be made to that. And with respect to track, we have three tracks in progress, Borough and Marlborough ready to receive their track surface. There's just some additional paving that needs to be done at Manalapan before the track is surfaced there. And then, to wrap up the presentation, we looked at the state budget process and the fact that, as was expected, we got flat state aid this year, and what Sean spent some time in with us was basically explaining how the state determines how much aid is given to each school district. And he also discussed the big picture with respect to what the annual budget will look like. And that is that.
Thank you, Michael. Very good.
Okay, next we have public participation, no one signed up. I assume there's... Okay, that brings us to the agenda, and I would like to take the agenda in one shot. So, can we have a motion?
Motion.
Second discussion.
The first topic on...
No.
No.
Oh, I would, you know what, I just had one thing to say. This, I was a little bit sad, because the very last teacher who was at Marlborough High School from when I was there is retiring.
High School from when I was there is retiring. This is Mac Namara, so.
Wow. Something.
There was one left.
It's hard when you're class of 99, Michael.
Yeah.
There's only one teacher left.
Okay, discussion on the agenda. Seeing none, Mr. Boyce.
Mr. Brunup.
Yes.
Mrs. Canario.
Yes.
Mr. Corolla.
Yes.
Mrs. Fankhauser.
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin.
Yes.
Mr. Messinger.
Yes.
Mrs. Tetera.
Yes.
Mr. Moses. Yes. Okay, that was G1 to K1. Next, new business. I only have one quick thing to say. Sometimes, learning can take place preliminarily. I recognize tonight that Miss, our superintendent, wanted to give me a lesson on how quickly I ran the board meeting last time, so I got the message. Okay, all business. Okay, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
That was Jen.
Motion.
Thank you, Pete. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All say aye. All solid.
Mike?